Sarah, Nick, Emily. Hold on, I'm doing this on two different devices. Oh my gosh, Mac is joining now. And. I think. That's everyone.
Marilyn is here as well, I see Marilyn.
Mira.
Marilyn's here too. Sorry, I'm on two devices so I can see.
Kate Kuzinski, is she on yet?
She just joined.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, I know she was planning on attending, do you see Cindy on?
I don't.
Okay. And I, I know Sandra had a conflict, so she will not be joining. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. At 6:02. We do have a quorum present. And I'd like to do roll call, so if each board member present, as I call your name, please introduce yourself. Kirsten.
Kirsten, please, parent rep.
Lori.
Lori Beetz, parent rep.
Sarah.
Sarah Ogato, parent rep.
Nick.
Nick Hall, teacher rep.
Emily.
Emily Holbert, teacher rep.
Matt.
Matt Laboon, community rep.
Mira.
Yep, Mira Weber, principal.
Marilyn.
Marilyn Dosario-Cado, non-teacher rep.
Kate.
Kate Kuzinski, parent rep.
And I'm Tina Rorke King, I'm a parent rep. And just making one more check for Cindy, Cindy's not on, correct? Okay, didn't want to miss her if she was, okay. So, I want to first say thank you to everyone who has called in. As, as you all know, this is a special meeting, not initially in our plan for the month, so thank you board members for making the time to be here, and thank you for everyone else in the community who called in, so appreciate your interest in taking the time to let us into your homes this evening. I, I want to, before we get going in earnest, there's a couple of things I want to say and clarify, and I have more to say and clarify when we get to public participation, but for this, I just want to say that we are here in this meeting to listen and to share as a community, and I didn't receive this directly, but some things have been shared that perhaps this meeting was a knee-jerk reaction. And I, I definitely own the special meeting because I'm, I'm the one who did it, but I wa- I want to be clear about something. Like I said, we are a community, we're a school community, and when, as far as my tenure as chair, the way I see things is when something is impacting a community, when voices are raised of so much concern, then as a community, it should be dressed as such. So I called this special meeting to provide the space for us to come together as a community and discuss this. It wasn't a special meeting called to make a decision one way or the other. It was called in order for us to weigh in as a community and make a decision that reflects the majority of the voices shared and considers those most impacted. And this response from me, well, is not limited to teachers. It's not limited to a certain parent group, it's not limited to council members or the administration. This is the way that I will chair this LSC. If there's a community concern, then we need the space to address it, and we need to learn to address it in a respectful, open-minded way, not just here, but just as a community in general, so just wanted to say that. I do not have the agenda in front of me because I forgot to print it, and I printed a million other things. What is next?
We did roll call, so first we need to approve the agenda.
Sounds right. Is there a motion on the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, there are a motion to approve the agenda. You, you may find me repeating things quite a bit because Emily has been so kind enough to stand in as secretary, so I am trying to make it as, as painless for her as possible. So Sarah has motion for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
I second.
Kate has second for approval of the agenda. Is there discussion on the agenda? Okay, I see no need for discussion. Mira, you don't see any hands raised, do you?
I do not, I'm checking my other screen. No.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the agenda as provided prior to the meeting by Principal Weber. All in favor, I will call your name, please state your vote. Kirsten?
She's saying yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mira?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Epstein.
Kate?
Yes.
And I am voting yes as well. Do you have the count, Emily, or would you like me to give it to you?
I heard one of same, so I have that noted, and that Cindy and Sandra are not present. I could do the totals later unless you have it.
Okay, no, that's absolutely fine. The math works out, however you say it, the math works out.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie.
First-time secretary over here, thank you.
You're doing great, don't worry about it. Okay, so the agenda is, is approved, the motion carries. I believe the next item on the agenda is for Mira to briefly share the reopen- reopening plan, and Mira, if you could also share any updated numbers that we've been discussing as far as the percentage who are coming, who have, who planned, who's still planning to return remote and similar numbers. So, thank you, Mira.
No problem. So yes, I am going to give just a high-level overview of information that I've been sharing. I've done two Tuesday with Mira, and the staff and I have been meeting weekly. As we all know, February fir- January 25th is the, the day that K through eight teachers and staff would be returning to school in person, and February 1st would be K through eight students returning in person. Our pod numbers would indicate that we can offer four days a week in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, pending accommodation decisions for staff and teachers. So if there was an accommodation granted that would potentially change that, then some grades may end up in a, in a hybrid model, meaning a shift A and a shift B. But our default model is that our students will be in school Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. Currently, and I'm just going to kind of go over some high-level numbers, and then just kind of open discussion. Currently, we have 192 students returning in person. That is 42% of our student body. Of the students returning, 15% are black. Just, Emily just noted Cindy just came in, if you just want to put that. Sorry. 15% of those of our students are black, 24% Hispanic, 46% white, 8% Asian, and 7% multiracial. Of the 192 returning, 2% are EL learners, English learners, and 35% of our overall EL student population is set to return. Of the 192 returning, 13% are diverse learners. That's 35% of our overall number of students with diverse learning needs. And 63% of the 192 students returning are free and reduced, receive free and reduced meals. So that's just to set a little context for the students that have selected a return in person. The number has changed a little. We were at 43% at one point, not too far off. And so as we've been going, I've been kind of updating these numbers. We have roughly hovered between, you know, this 42% and I believe at the highest, it was around 46%. That number has changed a little bit. What I would like to, just before we kind of get into the discussion, which is really involves public participation first, and the reason that we chose to have that happen is so that we could hear from the public LSC discussion on any next steps. As Tina said, the meeting is not, and was not called as a foregone conclusion that there would be an action taken by LSC. It was called so that we could hear from our larger community and get input from the larger community before discussing and/or deciding that there would be an action. So, I say that because returning to in-person learning is a personal and individualized decision. It's not a one-size-fits-all solution, and there is simply no right or wrong decision. However, it's a choice that each and every family has been given and, and should be given the option. As a school, we have spent our year revisiting values and tenants which make us who we are. We're a community that values our own diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're a community made up of students and families from across our city who come to us with a variety of perspectives, experiences, and needs. Our reopening numbers reflect this diversity of needs and wants. Some families want in-person, while others need in-person. As we engage in a discussion tonight, it needs to be anchored in respect, and we all must remain open-minded to hearing perspectives and point of views from others in our community. As an LSC, it's imperative to remember that each one of us was elected to represent the constituents that we serve. Our school has a 42% return in-person rate. As an LSC, we need to ask how we can help the various members in our community make the dis- make the selection that they have chosen work best, and ensure that we do not alienate members of our community by taking a stance that one belief is right and one belief is wrong. We are a community now, and we will continue to be one community once we get past this into a semblance of what we know as normal. We need to make sure that our actions and our comments reflect our collective desire to remain the strong community that we have worked so hard to build. And I just want to personally thank the many of you who have already sent statements to the LSC, many of them being very transparent and vulnerable, and I think it was very eye-opening for many of us to see that, and I want to encourage everyone to maintain an open, open mind as we hear from members of our community this evening.
Thank you. It's, it's, oh, got a strange echo. Thank you, Mira. Is there, are there any questions from the council as far as what Mira shared regarding the reopening, particularly the, the updated numbers, or any question at all? Want to open that to the board members? You see any hands, Mira?
No, I'm going to my other computer though because I have a better screen on that one. Oh, Lori's waving.
Could we share the information about how the teachers were surveyed and asked their opinion on the return?
I can't because the teachers were surveyed as part of a union meeting, and I am not part of those meetings, so I could ask a teacher to share out on that if they, if they would like to.
Nick, would you like, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I can share on that. So the teachers were just surveyed about a couple of weeks ago. Was it just a quick straw poll from, that was provided by our union representative? And it was a, just basically, how do you feel about the state of the current reopening plan? And it was just a very confident, confident, somewhat confident, not confident. And a total of 20. I just looked at the numbers because I told you, I told the LSC, I believe 66% of the teaching staff who were surveyed took the survey. I believe it was 25 out of 38 teachers took it, so. That was it, yeah. So it was just a quick straw poll from our union representative. And just to give an idea to our, just to give in feedback to our administration and just, just to kind of see where we were at.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, did that answer your question, Lori?
Could we also say the total that gave a lack of confidence, please? I have the number here if we want to talk about it. It was talked about at the last LSC meeting, and it was also in one of the emails. The percentage of teachers who voted for a lack of confidence in the opening plan.
The percentage of teachers who were not, why don't, I'd have to just double-check the language because I don't believe the word was com- confident. Let me just double-check and I'll get back to you.
Okay, while you do that, Nick, one question. Mira, with students who are in the classroom, will they be on their, learning on their screens there in the classroom, or what, how was that being handled? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just can't recall, actually.
No problem at all. I didn't speak much to that, so it, it'll be a combination of different things. What we do know is that as a, as the entirety, so 190 stu- 92 students could not all log on to a meet at the same time, and we, we wouldn't have the bandwidth for every student in the building to be on a Google Meet or doing a live stream. Everyone could be on their device doing either a Google Doc or a Seesaw or something like that. The streaming is where we will have to find what our bandwidth is. It's po- it's, we are able to do more than one class streaming, we just don't know the max number. In terms of how much they'll be on devices, they definitely will be working on devices, much because we really do hope that students who are in school will still be able to partner with students who are at home for specific pieces of work and for projects, whether that's a shared Google Doc or through breakout rooms. We do plan to schedule out different times in the day where different classes and grade levels will be able to do Google Meets either as a whole class or in breakout rooms. It's our goal that students in school and at home are interacting as much as possible. So they will be on devices. There may be times where they are not, although they will be required to bring their CPS issued device back and forth every day because a large part of their day would be on a device.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Nick, do you have the numbers?
I do have the numbers, yes. So the poll was taken 13 days ago by 25 teachers. The question was, how comfortable do you feel returning to in-person instruction? 56% answered very concerned, 32% answered concerned, 12% were somewhat confident, and 0% were confident. So those are the numbers of that straw poll, and again, that was 25 teachers took it, so about 66% of the staff that was surveyed.
Thank you, Nick. Just thought about this. Mira, are you recording this?
I am.
Thank you, thank you. Also, is there a chat feature where those who have not signed up ahead of time for public participation can sign up as we are going?
There's the, the, the comment field, the chat field, so.
So I would encourage those who are on, thank you Lori. I would encourage those who are on, who may not have signed up for public, good, public participation. If you decide you want to speak, please do sign up in the chat feature. If there are no other comments, oh, Mira, I just saw a chat pop up, but I didn't read it, what did?
Oh, I just put, if you want to speak, you can enter your name here. We have 10 already signed up from ahead of time, but you can put your name in the comments here.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. Mira, did you have anything else to add before we go into public participation? Okay, I just want to echo Mira's comments. First thanking everyone who weighed in by various means ahead of time, or phone calls, emails, whatever, I just appreciate the feedback from all stakeholders. And I want to implore us all to remember that we need to be respectful of time while we are all having our say, but also respectful of different opinions, and be respectful of the fact that it is a complex and personal decision, and it's a decision that we make from different vantage points. We all come to the table with different experiences, different needs, different concerns, different knowledge, different pieces of data, and so we need to respect that and not project. There is no wrong choice, there is a right choice for an individual's family or child, and we need to respect that. So with that, we will get going on public participation. Who has the time? Mira, you taking the, the time?
Who's the timer? I have the list, who's the timer?
I can be the timer.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
So first to sign up would be Lauren Coleman. I don't know if I saw her come in. Did anyone see Lauren?
I don't see her in the, in the meet.
Okay, so let me go back. If she comes in, we can come back to her. Janelle Harden? I know I said Janelle.
Hi, I'm here.
Thanks, Janelle.
So, okay, so I'm Janelle Harden, I'm the social worker assigned to Agassi, and I want to speak today about my concerns about the reopening plan for staff, specifically clinicians like myself and for students. As a social worker who has provided counseling to students throughout this pandemic, it's clear how challenging it has been, and the toll it's taken on children's mental health. I believe very strongly that children just belong back in school, but not this way with inadequate planning and not at this time. As a social worker with Agassi, I work with students across multiple pods, and I'm fortunate. As a social, most social workers and other clinicians like speech therapists, nurses, psychologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists work in several buildings. At this time, the district has not provided a specific plan for clinical services such as adequate PPE, cleaning protocols, procedures for grouping students, or even guaranteed safe private spaces where our services can be provided, and we've been here since January 4th. I'm gut-wrenching thinking about colleagues who live at home with a family member who has a health condition or whose age puts them at increased risk, and many of them have not been approved for ADA accommodations across the district, and they have to make a terrible choice. In recent clinicians' meetings, we were informed that we would be pulled to cover in-person students at schools where their clinicians were out on ADA leave, and that we may possibly lose the students who we currently service who remain at home. This is not only unsafe, since it increases our interaction with more schools and more pods, but it's detrimental to students who we've built relationships with and supported throughout this pandemic. I'm also very concerned about the impact that lack of free play has on our children. This was a critical issue before the pandemic, helping lead to 1 in 7 children being diagnosed with a mental health disorder, and of course, it's now even more pronounced. I'm concerned that the district's rush to make sure children meet their academic milestones will be to the detriment of their mental health, which is evidenced, for example, by the reduction in recess time. We know that our children need the opposite. This is intuitive. It can be observed in area private schools who've dramatically increased their outdoor play and learning time. I don't think it's fair to subject children to the additional stressor of having to leave the comfort of their homes where they have freedom of movement to adjust to a new schedule, sit at a desk masked six feet apart, without being able to leave their classroom except for during a 20-minute recess period. This plan is not developmentally appropriate, especially for our youngest learners, and it will lead to more emotional distress, which we know makes children unavailable for learning anyway. Finally, I'm concerned about the inequity that exists within CPS that will only increase with the current reopening plan. We know that children who are most at risk are not the students who are planning to return in person. I'm concerned that teachers will naturally have to prioritize the needs of those students who are physically in their classroom, which will result in those who are learning from home receiving less attention, being less included, and falling farther behind. This plan is not worth risking our lives for, especially before we've had the option to be vaccinated, and that's so close. We hope that many of you will continue to stand up to the board until the pla- the plan or the situation improves. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Natasha Dunn?
Hi. I'm a parent at Agassi, my daughter is in sixth grade here, and I am, I didn't get an opportunity to do the opt-in form. It missed me. But my daughter does need to be in school, and she would benefit from being in the classroom. And I, my concern is that there's this thing where parents and children are being put against teachers who feel like the environment is not safe for them. But there's parents and there's children who want this option, who need this option, and the people who are supposed to be, you know, teaching them are making them feel as if they're wrong for wanting to exercise their right to opt-in. And I think that's very problematic, especially considering that public schools are supposed to serve everyone. And that, you know, when we pay taxes, we pay for a service that we should get. It's completely unfair that we see school districts across the state, even within the city, where kids are going to school every day. They're in activities, they're doing things. And then there's this battle here in Chicago for people to have the right to send their kids to school while everybody else is doing it. To me, that is equity. Equity is giving families the option to return, while yes, more white parents filled out the forms. What we do know for a fact is that in other schools across the district, while it's lower numbers, the lower numbers doesn't represent necessarily the fact that people weren't interested, it's just that those schools did not have a lot of students, period, in the building, but there's a lot of students that opted in, and even here at Agassi, you had over almost 200 students that opted in. And I think it's unfair to allow those students to not get that option just because people don't feel comfortable. I think this is a time for heroes to step up, for us to work together to find solutions, to support the comfort of people, but I think that to just halt everything and say, well, no, let's just push things back, that's bad, because we also know that there are students that are struggling with this remote learning, and it's unfair to them. So I'm hoping that the LSC do their due diligence and represent everyone, everyone's interests. And I would think that, you know, I know that a lot of LSCs are writing letters to support, to, to say that they are against the reopening. I would hope that this LSC doesn't, don't do that. I think that that would be unfair to the almost 200 families that need to be in, in the classroom.
Thank you, Natasha. Carly Wallace?
Hi, I'm Ms. Wallace, for those of you who don't know me, which as I look around and address this board, I notice there's very few families. Tonight, I will be sharing my concerns regarding our youngest learners. Having taught first grade for the past five years, I am very invested in the school community, and therefore, I feel it is important I add my perspective. Throughout the school year, I've been working closely with our administration as part of our school's instructional leadership team, and we have been tasked with thinking through and getting ready for CPS's current reopening plan. I want to thank our administration for providing the staff with as much information as they have at their disposal and allowing us to ask questions and give feedback. However, to be honest, I'm still very worried about the district's plan. And as some of my colleagues have already expressed, most of our staff are very worried as well. We are worried that the proposed CPS plans are not safe, they're not equitable, and will not enhance student learning for our littlest learners. While I respect and understand, every family needs to make the decision that they are most comfortable with and is best for them. I want to take a couple of minutes tonight to ensure every parent and guardian, whether you're staying remote or choosing to return for hybrid in-person learning, understands just how much will change, because it will basically be everything. To be in front of students unable for them to see my smile or comfort them when they are upset is heartbreaking to me. And for my youngest learners, this is how they will see me every day, with a mask on. And for many, with a And for many, with a mask and through a computer, just as you are now. With that, I want to touch on a few points, like small group instruction. My small group reading sessions, when I say, let's practice a vowel sound like oh, ah, 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 they won't be able to watch my mouth. And for many of my students, this non-verbal cue that helps them know the right sounds is helping them learn to read. Or when my in-person students need help with their technology devices, or anything else for that matter, as they inevitably will at six and seven years old, I'm concerned about how I'm going to be able to help them without being able to get very close to them. Students will need to be nearly 100% capable of full independent functioning for every part of their day now. And this is just a couple of examples that come to mind. The reality of in-person learning is gone are the days of flexible seating, like laying on the carpet, exploring something together in partnership or small group, besides through the computer, buzzing around the school like a bee, or even an impromptu dance party. Well, these are sad changes I'm beginning to wrap my head and my heart around. There are a couple of other big changes that make me very concerned. First is the lack of movement for our primary age children. And the second is the overall social connection of our class communities that will be limited or lost. For those returning to in-person classrooms, I'm worried that they'll be sitting for seven hours with very little movement throughout their day. I'm worried about the fact that they will only be able to get one recess outside. And that's if we're lucky and Chicago weather holds up. And the janitors with all their other tasks will be able to clear those spaces. I'm worried about them wearing masks and headphones, and for many, glasses for that long of a period. I'm worried about them all facing one direction and not being able to easily interact with their peers during the day, including lunchtime, when there'll be very strict protocols, so that we don't potentially spread any germs. While we can all probably agree that remote learning has its disadvantages and its downsides, it at least keeps our students on the same playing field in terms of scheduling, engagement, and access to their teachers and classmates. With CPS's current reopening plan, our classroom communities and our connections that we have worked so hard to build since September will now be shattered. Our classrooms of students will ultimately become disconnected from one another. As no longer see each other, they won't know who liked or did the same thing as them, and they won't be able to call on one another. It's going to divide our classroom community, as well as our teachers' attention. Because CPS believes that teachers will be able to set successfully teach simultaneously, meaning that they will give their undivided attention and focus to all of the students in person in front of them and all of the students at home staying remote at the same time. If you think this sounds near impossible, you're right. And the biggest thing is that it will negatively affect all students and families involved on either side of the screen. Of course, I'm worried about myself and my safety, as well as my fellow colleagues' safety. But as I hope I've made clear here tonight, I am more worried about my students' safety, their mental health, their physical well-being, and their learning outcomes with this current unfair, unsafe, and unprepared plan. So in summary, I ask you, the LSC, to please consider passing a resolution tonight, asking CPS to consider the needs of all students and families and staff to create a better plan for everyone involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carly. Josie Pearson.
Hi, I'm here. But I'm here. All right, good evening. I am Josie Pearson and I teach middle school math. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of our middle school team to share our concerns about the CPS reopening plan. I would also like to thank Mira and Michelle for encouraging us to voice our concerns and for working with us to find solutions. We understand that reopening has already been delayed twice and that many families are eager to get their children back into schools. However, with virus cases now spreading in Chicago and a majority of Agassi teachers and staff not feeling safe returning, and a majority of our students have also chosen to, chosen to remain remote. This plan for reopening schools mid-pandemic is not safe and not equitable. We are worried that simultaneous instruction, where teachers are expected to teach both in-person and remote students at the same time, will diminish the quality of instruction for all learners, especially those who choose to stay remote. Many of our diverse learners, English language learners, and students of color have chosen not to return in person. And under the hybrid plan, they will receive fewer instructional minutes with their teachers present. This plan will divide our community and not provide for all learners equally. As a CPS school that is truly diverse, we must demand a plan that is equitable. If over half of our families do not feel safe sending their children into our building at this time, then this plan should not be acceptable for any of us. Parents should not have to choose between keeping their family safe and receiving an equal amount of learning time. Also, we are worried that our middle school kids will not isolate, keep safe distance, or wear masks before and after school. Once school reopens, older kids may gather in groups, spreading the virus both outside and inside and outside of school. Add in public transportation and this becomes even more likely. K through eight schools, like we have in CPS, are not common. And this model has not been proven safe for schools like ours. On a more personal note, I am also a CPS parent. My son is in first grade at another CPS school. And I, like all parents, have been very worried about my son's progress and his social emotional needs since schools closed last March. But do any of these worries exceed my fear that returning to school now may lead to a friend or family member or teacher getting sick? That someone he knows and loves may get sick and possibly die? Certainly not. And I do not want our choice to send him back to school to put other families at risk. We all want to return to school when it is safe for everyone to do so. And now is not the time. We ask that our LSC draft a resolution declaring our opposition to the reopening plan that the mayor and CPS have put forth. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Josie. Adam Collins.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you first, uh, for everyone for giving me a chance to speak. Um, and Tina, I want to say appreciate, um, you having the meetings and more of us being part of the conversation. I can't speak for, for other parents, but, but I really appreciate it. Um, and as you noted at the outset, it's a really emotional topic for anyone and for everyone i- in our school and throughout CPS. And for our family, like a lot of others, it's been extremely emotional. I, I believe our kids are missing out in the core part of their education by not being in the classroom. In a chaotic world that we're all living in right now with everything that's gone on over the last year, not just with the pandemic, with everything else, the uncertainty about what tomorrow holds for their educational future is almost too much to bear. Um, and I, I want to say it's, that's not a reflection on the teachers, um, at the school or, um, the Agassi administration or CPS. I, I, I see, uh, there's a ti- a number of our teachers have spoken here tonight. And I can tell you, as a parent, they provide an absolutely amazing education for our kids. I know they care about them. You can see it every day. You can hear it in, in, in their voices tonight. And all around, I've been really impressed by the hard work that's gone into making remote learning as successful as humanly possible. And I think it has been. I think I would tell, I've told everyone, I think remote learning has been overwhelmingly successful thanks to the tireless work of our teachers. But I also don't think it's a substitute for in-person learning, especially not for, for young kids. We've got, um, a first grader who, you know, if this, who have soared for the rest of the year, will have spent a year and a half of his first two years at home. And I've got a kindergartner who's never met another kid in the school, ever. There's another kid in our kindergartner's class who insists, who my kid insists is his best friend. But I honestly don't know if they've ever, if the other kid even knows my son exists. And so, you know, it makes me wonder, how are they going to learn the interpersonal skills that come with being around other students? And how to work with people, or how to handle difficult situations in the playground? How to ask another kid when they need help with something? Or, or how to know when they need to lend a hand to, to another student? Those are, those are really important life lessons that you can't learn on, on Zoom, no matter how good the teachers are, how great the teachers are, no matter how strong the curriculum is at the school. And as the son of, uh, I've, my parents are both public school teachers. And I, I can appreciate the concerns that have, um, that have been raised. I've talked to both my parents, uh, about it a number of times, as you might imagine, over the last 10 months, I guess, now. But there's countless schools. I think someone else made this point, uh, both public and private in the area, in the state or in the country or in the world, um, who have returned children to the classroom and they've done it safely. And so I, I guess I'd argue there's a roadmap. Um, and the plans that I've seen from CPS and the ones we were, we were able to join, my wife and I were able to join Principal Weber's, um, session, I think it was last Tuesday. The plans that we've seen seem really well thought out and really well designed. And if I didn't have confidence that they would keep my kids safe, I, I wouldn't have opted to send them back in. And I know we're not alone in this line of thinking, because there, there is about a half, a little under half of the families at the school made the, the same decision that we did to, to opt to send our, our kids back. And I just, I want LSC to consider all of us too before sending a resolution to, um, to CPS that suggests otherwise. I really appreciate the time, though, very much, uh, from now, LSC.
Thank you, Adam. Ramon Flores.
Can everybody hear me, see me?
Uh, we can see a black screen, but we can hear you. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on my work computer and I have a little slider that helps block my camera. But, um, I want to give, uh, thank everyone for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to have the opportunity to, uh, vote, voice my opinion and kind of what we're thinking as well as far as the reopening plan. I, I too have two kids, one in the third grade and one in kindergarten. And, and this remote learning, while it's been different and, and it's been a little tough, we've been fortunate, we've been able to provide an environment for them to learn and have the, the opportunities to get things done. But at the same time, I, I know we, we're also looking forward to going back. And, and through my personal experiences, even though I know this is a hard time for everyone, there's a lot of unknowns as far as what this is doing emotionally and socially and academically for our kids. Through my own personal experiences, uh, we've actually had our kids, you know, in different environments that, that follow the, the rules and the protocols put in place by CPS. They've had preschool, summer camps, swim lessons, and a few other activities they attend on a regular basis. And, and to this day, we have not had one case where we've had someone call us and have our, our class of, socially distanced or stay home because of, of, uh, contact tracing. Uh, maybe the protocols are followed, cleaning, mask, distancing. My kids enjoy their classes. They enjoy their, their gymnastics. They enjoy their swim lessons, their summer camps, their science camps. And each one of these were done using the rules in place that CPS has put in place. So I know it's tough for everyone. Just my experience has been that as long as these rules are followed and these cleanings are followed, we can go to these activities and the kids can enjoy these opportunities with each other and have the classes in, in, in these environments. Um, at, on top of that, I've, I've also, through my career experience, worked in labs. I've, I've bolognese degree in a minor in chemistry. And I've worked in a toxicology lab full of bloodborne pathogens everywhere. Seven years, and I never got anything, you know, sick or anything, contamination, because I followed the basic rules, covered my ma- my mouth, wore gloves, or washed my hands, wore a mask. Things like this are in place have been, you know, can help. And I said, I think even within a school environment, you do these things and it can be provided an environment where the kids can go back. And, and even if it's just until we cross that home back to as normal as we can get, like it gives them an opportunity to at least start to work back together as a group, even in person as best they can. Uh, again, this isn't just, you know, coming from my personal experience and, and what I think we're working for the kids, given where we're at right now. I know it's not right for everyone, but I at least want to give my opinion on, on my thoughts and what my family's thinking as far as why we ask for our kids to go back, even after we've seen what CPS has done as far as the, the, what they have in place for, for the schools. I, I guess I know it's not for everyone, but I just want, you know, reach out and say, thanks, thank you for letting me speak on this. And I hope, you know, it, it helps in making a decision one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramon. Matt Collins.
Hi, I'm here. Okay, I'm kind of like balancing multiple devices, so I apologize. Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew Collins. I am a sixth grade teacher. Uh, and I'm a member of the ILT, ILT team, IB implementation team, and I also coach debate. It kind of feels like I'm participating in like a debate speech right now. Um, I want to, um, start by thanking everybody in attendance for taking the time and space to lend your voice to these conversations surrounding reopening schools and hybrid learning. It's super powerful and I think important for our community to come together, share, listen and connect to our shared concerns. And it kind of feels like, um, we've been missing opportunities to do so. So I really appreciate everybody doing that. And I just want to take a moment to offer my own reflection and my remaining concerns and, to be honest, fears about, um, the current reopening plan. I have concerns about the process with which the plan was created to begin with. This plan has been created, crafted unanimously with very little input from stakeholders like parents, communities, teachers and principals. The plan is not equitable. A majority of our students and families of color are opting for remote learning across the district with that majority. Our conversations and decisions should shift more from how can we get students back into the buildings to why are families and students still opting for remote learning? And under what conditions are they making this decision? What conditions need to improve? You know, I do worry about whose voices are being prioritized in that decision-making. I have concerns about the ability of the district to contact us in a timely manner. I have concerns about the district's definition of what close contact means and their ability to enforce that across, metric across the district. Um, I have concerns about the resources given to schools to cover, cover potential teacher absences. I worry about the, I worry the new cadre substitute positions, which have not all been hired, will not be enough to cover potential absences that might occur due to exposure or positive cases and other matters. What do we do when teachers are absent? What do we do if my teachers are absent? Ten, um, my twin sister, who was a teacher at, uh, in suburban Ohio, at the height of the second wave, she's teaching in a half-day hybrid model, um, had 20 teachers absent in one week due to exposure and confirmed cases, and her own co-teacher was ultimately hospitalized. It took them weeks to recover and restore their hybrid routines, and they're still struggling. And I just worry that her situation is foreshadowing her own. And so I have concerns about the sustainability of the plan. I worry about the disruption to learning that will occur as a result. It sounds like as a result of CPS's deference to schools, we now have multiple different plans per school, per, per grade level. And I worry about, about the thought of having to switch from in-person back to remote when positive cases enter the building. Will our hybrid teaching and learning experience be us just bracing for the inevitable two-week quarantine and switch to remote learning? I have concerns about the pod structure. There are multiple outlets where pods can be compromised. Departmentalized teachers switching to rooms with other pods to teach. Specials teachers seeing up to eight pods in one day. Staff with children will be able to send their child four days a week, crossing paths in classrooms that are following a shit A and B model. But these teachers didn't have a choice. Only one in 10 requests by teachers to work remotely due to childcare have been approved by the district. What would be a pod of just a few students restricted to homerooms are now whole units. Students and staff that will experience and can experience close contact throughout the seven-hour school day. I have concerns about ventilation, the air quality methodology that CPS used. Only tested about 20% of spaces in school buildings in, in the middle school on the third floor. On the official report, it only looks like room 303 and 308 have beta. The HEPA filters are not suitable for large classroom spaces. And CPS is assuring that there are multiple layers of mitigation in place. But what are we to do with the concerns that arise with each of the multiple layers of mitigation? I have concerns about the appropriateness of hybrid learning and the benefits it's supposed to offer. Any professional development offered, to my knowledge, has been real strictly about COVID training or just optional webinars. I worry about the balance of creating community across two different modes of learning. Adherence to social distancing, mask-wearing implications around move in the classroom. Already put limits to the type of learning we strive to create at Agassi. One then driven by inquiry, collaboration, small groups, partnerships, consistent breaks and flexible seating and learning spaces. But with the core protocols in place, much of these won't not be able to take place in a way that we envision. Um, and much of that work will have to continue digitally and remotely, so that we can do not lose touch with our remote learners. So to that end, we are in a difficult position. We're definitely in a difficult position. Slating, um, but I also think the conditions between having decisions. And. prove those conditions. And I'm struggling to see the condition, how the conditions have markedly improved since the decision to remain remote. Conditions are simply unsafe, and so I do urge the LSC to consider.
Thank you, Matt. Brian Shields.
Hi, yes. All right, perfect. Well, first I want to say thank you to the LSC for hearing from people directly from the community. We sent a statement to the LSC, so hopefully you had a chance to see that. I'm not going to read through all the parts of that, but just kind of hit the highlights of it. So I'm a parent of a first grader and a fourth grader. And really, the most important point that I just wanted to raise today was, I know it was talked about at the last meeting, the LSC sending a letter or a resolution. And given the numbers, we just feel that's inappropriate and not the role of the LSC. If we're going to, if they're going to represent the whole community with forty-two percent of parents choosing to send their kids back, I don't see how the LSC could send a resolution on that really is going to speak for the whole community. If individual teachers and members want to make their own statement, they certainly should. But the LSC really does need to represent the community. And again, given the numbers, I don't see how that would be possible with the statement. In terms of sending kids back, I just want to, you know, at the last meeting, there weren't a lot of people speaking up about sending kids back. There've been much more, many more tonight, which has been helpful. You know, our choice.
Brian, we can, we can hardly hear you. I just want to make sure everyone can hear you. We're having trouble hearing you. Okay, oh, that's okay. Try better. That was weird.
Okay, sorry, maybe I'll just hold this there. Sorry about that. So we did choose to send our kids back to school and just want to give our thought process on that. You know, our view is that the protocols that are in place, we feel they do appear to be as robust as anything we've seen from friends who we have in the suburban school districts, friends in the Catholic schools here in Chicago that have been in person. And there don't seem to be any major outbreaks of disease in those settings. So the protocols do seem like they are working. As someone mentioned earlier today, similar with our kids, we had our kids in summer camp, kids are in learning pods, kids are in after-school programs. And again, there've been no outbreaks. And one thing that we haven't learned from that is the kids are fine wearing masks. They get used to it very quickly and half the time they don't even notice when we pick them up that they still have their mask on. And one of the things I just wanted to bring forward, others have tonight, is just a view from parents watching their kids. While remote learning is going well, the kids are not doing well. I think that's something that does need to be acknowledged. They're fatigued, they're lonely, they are socially disconnected from their friends, even though they see them on a screen all day. And they're not getting this movement that's been talked about tonight. The kids are in the room for seven hours a day. With parents working, it's hard to get them outside. So even twenty minutes of recess will be more movement than they are getting today. It will certainly be a change, just as going remote was, but getting the kids back in classroom, we feel, is in the best interest of the kids. That being said, I realize that people have different opinions. And again, I just wanted to share that view with the LSC so they could hear it. You know, I think the goal is just how do we all work together to get kids back in school as soon as possible? Realizing no plan will be perfect, every plan will have some risk to it. And then the last point that I just wanted to raise was, one thing I would like to hear from is the parent reps on the LSC and whether they chose to send their, or are choosing to send their kids back to school. Normally, I would not ask that. It's obviously a personal decision. However, if the LSC is going to take this next step to have a statement on behalf of the whole community, I do think that's important information for the community to have. So after the public participation, I hope that the parent reps could address that directly. So those were the main points I wanted to make. Thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Sorry, Christopher Kaczynski.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing? Okay, so I just had a few things to say. And really, my, my point of view is mainly from my concerns really about teachers' well-being. So first, I want to say thanks to the fifth grade teachers for providing a great education during this hard time while also acting as an IT support desk to the classes and working with imperfect technology. I know teaching is difficult enough as it is face-to-face, so I just want to applaud you for your hard work and your ability to engage the students during these tough times. And so regarding school reopening, I've been following this pandemic since early, or I'd say late January of 2020. I've spent a lot of hours following and reading what's going on and listening to epidemiologists talking about this. And I've seen a concerning pattern emerge in our collective thinking. And it seems to be that there's this unfounded exceptionalism of this idea of us, that this is not going to affect us. And if you remember at the beginning of the year, we saw reports that there's some virus in China. And our first thought was probably, hey, we've been here before. Yeah, we always hear about this like every year, but it's not going to be anything big. It's in China, it's not us. And then it was in Italy, but that's not us. But then it's in New York. But then it started getting a little closer to home. And then people said, you know, rural areas are fine. You know, there's no public transportation, there's no, you know, less population density. And then it exploded over everywhere. Okay, so no one's really, was really safe from this. It was kind of this illusion that somehow we're fundamentally different. And we seem to keep repeating this story, you know, time and time again. Epidemiologists said, well, if we don't change things, this is what's going to happen in the next six to twelve weeks. And lo and behold, that's exactly what's happened. And yet we keep gnawing and crossing our fingers. This time it's going to be different. And so right now, I mean, I know there's some schools that are pulling this off somewhat well. Some schools have positivity rates exceeding twenty percent. Okay, and so I have to ask, what, like, and this is in Austin, let's say, how are we fundamentally at less risk than these other, these other schools? And now we have, you know, four new variants that has been in the news a lot. There's at least four at the latest count. We know the variants are here in the United States, they've already been detected. They are not established yet. In four to six weeks, epidemiologists are saying they will become the dominant strain. They have a transmissibility of fifty to seventy percent higher than the predominant variants right now. And when you take that and put it into a exponential function, that means that once established, even if we kept all of our mitigation strategies in place, we would have four times the cases in four weeks. So, and right now, a lot of the things that had worked in Europe no longer work. They had to lock down everything again. So seventy-five percent of cases of people, in this recent study that they just released, after six months after initial infection, people still have at least one symptom left. So I think a lot of people look at this as a very binary disease. You either die or you survive. Seventy-five percent of people have at least one symptom six months without resolution. Will that ever resolve? We don't know yet. So, and so I want to leave you with these questions. If your child faced the same odds of death and potentially lifelong health problems as teachers, would you risk it? And if not, ask yourself why? And is the quality of your students' education worth more than their teachers' lives or lifelong health issues? So I know this has been a hard year, and if there was no end in sight, we would, you know, we would really have to be making some harder questions. But we have a vaccine. If we prioritize it probably in a month or two, most teachers probably get vaccinated. And we wouldn't even have to have this conversation where we're basically risking other people's well-being. And, you know, I've seen some people talk about, we pay taxes. So we're paying taxes and that gives us a right to play, you know, Russian roulette with our teachers' lives? No. So, and then regarding, I have one more thing regarding the air quality report. It's kind of a little slightly different issue. I'm a mechanical engineer specializing in HVAC, and I've read the air testing reports. And the HVAC systems can help reduce the amount of virus in the school in two ways. Either dilution of virus particles via introduction of outside air and removal of stale air or removal of virus particles via filtration. And the measurements provided in those reports provide no insight regarding the buildings or the building's HVAC system's ability to do either of those. So it doesn't really provide any insight regarding risk associated with building occupancy. So that's all I had to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christopher. That, um, those are the ten speakers who signed up. I know we also had statements submitted that the LSC has reviewed. About ten of those came in and I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any names in the comment field for anyone else who, who is asking to speak, so.
And Lauren Coleman, we don't have her.
I didn't see her join well.
Okay, Ms. Pearson, I see you have your hand raised. Or was that an accident?
Sorry, that was an accident.
Okay, no problem. Okay. So there are.
I guess that would conclude public participation, which would then bring us to an LSC discussion.
Absolutely. So before we go around, before we have the LSC discussion, there was a request by Brian Shields for parent reps to share. I'm going to naturally leave that up to each individual parent on the board, whether or not they want to do that. But I'm happy to share my choice, not only my choice today, but also my, my choice when first asked. Back in, I guess it was early December with the first decision point, I did indicate that my child would be returning to school. However, when I made that response in the comments, I was very clear that my intention on making that decision was only so that I would have the option when the time got closer because the information put forward by CPS was woefully inadequate, is how I put it. So since then, since a choice needed to be made and so that our school, so that Principal Weber could work with the most accurate numbers possible, I did let her know that my child would not be returning. So just wanted to share that. Is there any other parent rep who would like to share? Again, you're under no obligation to do so. Kate?
Yeah, is it okay if I say something just because I'm kind of having something prepared? And then I will answer that question. So as a parent and a pediatrician, I feel my perspective on is this, of this is not through the lens of just my child, but also the lens of my patients. I serve a predominantly Latinx community, and my patients and their families have been disproportionately affected by COVID. I have patients who have lost healthy parents in their forties. I have patients who have multiple, who have had multiple family members in the ICU at the same time. I have also seen patients that have been terribly affected by the isolation that comes with e-learning. Depression and anxiety rates for patients, especially middle and high school students, have skyrocketed this time and has led from many of my patients going from being honor roll students to failing at this point. I see the need for kids to be getting back to school. Many of my patients will be forever affected by all of the changes that came this year. Some that just happened because they had to, and some that were from decisions by the adults around them. So all of this colors my feelings about reopening schools. Although we need to get them back to school, we need to make sure that we're doing it in a safe way for kids and parents. Given that so many of my patients have had family members who have been very ill or have died from this, a lot of my patients have chosen not to go back to school because their calculation, different than a lot of the patients, the parents who have spoken today, if you don't know someone or if your family member has not been really ill with this, you're not as afraid of it as people who have had life-changing experiences because of this virus. So I've been seeing patients with COVID since early March. I'm a pediatrician that sees sick kids all the time, and so that's what I've been doing. And I run a health center where we see lots of adults and lots of sick adults too. We have had people, you know, come into our office and be directly admitted to the ICU. And some of them haven't made it because of how sick some of our patients walk into our clinic. So I have been seeing patients because, you know, seeing patients in person, there isn't a remote option. And I've been trained on PPE, keeping myself safe. And with all of our safety protocols, we've done a fantastic job of making sure there haven't been any staff outbreaks, even though we've had tons of people come into our clinic that have COVID. And we've had a lot of our staff that have tested positive because they've been infected outside the clinic. The strategy that I have used and that is recommended by our clinic is that I wear a mask and I wear a face shield. My patients are all wearing masks and I never spend fifteen minutes in a room with, more than fifteen minutes in a room with anyone, regardless if it's a newborn or a sick kid or someone who is having trouble breathing or a nurse that I'm having a conversation with. I am never in a room with anyone for more than fifteen minutes. This is what has kept me safe, and this is what has kept all of my staff safe during this time. The real concern I have here is that I'm sending my child back and spending seven hours in one room, basically, where I have not seen any information that makes me feel good about the ventilation system really helping to make sure that if someone is sick, that the virus particle is not building up in that room. And so when I'm thinking about my kid and if I'm safe putting him in this environment that I have not put myself in, I also think about all the staff because my child will be in one room all day. But the staff and teachers are going to be going to multiple rooms. The specials teachers could be seeing, you know, I don't know what the exact number is, but it's, I think sixty to a hundred and twenty kids a day potentially. And so I really think it's important that we are doing this in a safe way. And I am concerned that what has been presented in front of me is not safe enough for me to feel comfortable attending my kid there. So to Brian Shields, I would like to say, I said that I would possibly be sending my child back. I wanted to have the option with the rates where they were in early December. I was hopeful that things would be better by now. I didn't know the variants would exist. And I was hopeful that we would be in a place where I would feel like this is comfortable. I was also hoping that teachers would have vaccines by now because I believed some of the information we were getting about vaccines. But given where we are today, I feel like I can't send my kid into a situation I wouldn't put myself into. And so I'm keeping my kid home. At the same time, I understand completely the need to get the schools open and to do it in a way that's safer. And I just don't think we're there yet. But I also want to be representing all of Agassi families. And so I really appreciate everyone who spoke in tonight, and it will go into my decision-making.
Is there, okay, Lauren?
I have no problem saying that I said no. I would not be bringing my three children back to school. In fact, I told Mira before the survey was due because I didn't want anybody to waste any time putting together any kind of plan for my kids. I have three diverse learners. Remote learning is not going well for us. But I would not put them in a chance of infect, get infecting them, becoming infected themselves, infecting my husband or I, or infecting their teachers. So when I have been advocating to keep the schools closed, I have been attending so many CPS-led events, so many activist-led events, virtually, of course, I don't leave my house. So many things. It's because I care so deeply about the teachers and the other kids and the other people. So I will, I am listening to everybody's things. You've seen me taking notes. And you know, it'll be very clear, I don't agree with some of them. But I think that so many of us are coming from a place of privilege. And every time we say, hey, I need a choice, we all deserve a choice. You do deserve a choice, but you have to remember that by sending your kids back, you are taking away that choice from the teachers and the staff and everybody who has to come into contact with them. So I feel very emotional about that, and I'm here for the, for a lot of it is for the teachers, for the kids who don't have a voice in this, and the parents who are not here today. It does seem like a very clear demographic is here speaking tonight. And I do think that their voices deserve to be heard, and I think they had a lot of really great things to say. But clearly, a huge portion of our population is not here to speak for themselves. But yeah, we're not going back.
So that's Cindy or Nick? You're, you're next to each other on my screen. Cindy, sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, back in December, filling out that survey and being maybe naively hopeful on a number of levels. One, that the numbers wouldn't skyrocket the way that they have. That the vaccine would have rolled out. Um, that the vaccine would have rolled out in a more timely fashion. Um. Then I was looking at, you know, based on a mother's emotion, looking at two boys that are lonely, um, sometimes depressed, needing friends and interaction. So I put my, I opted to put my name on that list to send them back. And, um, the world hasn't responded in that way. And the science doesn't point in the right direction. The port, the teachers, I, I mean, I, I have to support you guys. And if you're not feeling safe, then the quality of education, just on that level, whether, you know, you're in the classroom and trying to do both remote and in-person teaching, that, that's just gonna suffer, and then everybody suffers. So I've taken myself off the list. And, um, and yeah, my kids have been in and are in activities, and that we're in summer camp and still play flag football outside in the snow. Um. But it's not, we're just not there yet, in my mind. We're just not there yet. The teachers need to be vaccinated. There needs to be just a better place and plan in, plan in place, and, um, so as hopeful as I was in December, I just feel like now is not the, not the right time. So my children will not be returning.
Any other parent rep like to weigh, uh, weigh in on that question? Again, if not, that's completely fine. Um, additionally, since we are in discussion from the board, oh, hey, Sarah, just let me say this right quick. Since we are in discussion, uh, as a board, we'll just flow right into and what anyone wants to share regarding, um, the feedback you received, where you stand, anything you want to share, uh, regarding the decision that we'll have to make. Sarah?
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I've spoken to other parents and, um, you know, that question was, was a great question, and I'm glad it was asked. Um, I share the same sentiment of what my, my, um, what has been shared already in terms of, um, I do have a son in the school. He has been adversely impacted by remote learning on many levels. Um, and it's hard to see that. It's hard to see that. It's hard to support him in, in that process. Um, and to support him in his learning and his social emotional development. Um, I filled out the survey, uh, to opt in, uh, and then I heard about the plan, and I heard about the concerns. And I, I, um, I'm concerned, as, as I have shared with my little, uh, parent group, and as, as I've heard with teachers about, um, the choices that are on the table, the plans that are in play, um, and I'm, I'm not convinced that this is the time. Um, and I really think folks who have contributed their, their thoughts and their concerns, um, um, but that the plan that, that has been, that is on the table, um, are the resources that are available right now, it's, it's, it's still very concerning for me. And as, as I said, myself will not be coming back, uh, for this school year, to back into the hybrid model.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, any other board member like to weigh in on the discussion?
I would, but I might be frozen. I, all of you are frozen today.
Oh, we can, we can see.
My children will not be returning. Um, I immediately said no because, one, this is traditional, like the height of cold and flu season, and added a pandemic, and that's just insanity. Um, and we, you know, the teachers haven't been vaccinated, and if they're terrified, they're not gonna be able to do their job. So.
Thank you, Kirsten. Anyone else?
Are we just talking in general now?
Yeah, if you, if you have something, yeah, if you have something.
I think that one thing, when we talk about how many people put in yes that they would return, um, back in December, the first thing is to be aware of, there was no plan in place. That, that survey was not complete. It didn't give us any kind of idea. It was kind of like, so if you decide to go back, we'll come up with a plan, but if you don't decide to go, to come back, then we won't do a plan, but let's just see what you're gonna, and it was so chaotic. And that is how this started, and that is how that information was gathered. So of course, optimistic parents put down, hey, that seems like a long way away. Things are gonna change, things are gonna happen. I'm gonna put down yes. Because if I put down yes, that means later on at any time, I can go back to hybrid. I can decide that this is not safe. I can decide all of these things and make that decision at the end. If I say no, they said, if you say no now, you can never come back. You like, it was that kind of theory. So people were hopeful when they put that out. I think if they were to do another survey again today, um, I think that the answers would be very different. I think that it is telling that who was able to make this, this meeting today and give their opinion. And when we look at our statistics of how it break down, when you look at equity, um, it is very different. I think it is very different if you don't have the resources, if you did get sick, that you don't have the medical care, that you don't have that safety net in play. It can seem a lot more deadly when you have people who are dying. It can seem a lot more dangerous when it would mean, um, devastating loss of, um, connection to people, your jobs, whatever that could mean. Um, and everybody, I, I keep hearing this, it's a personal choice. It's a personal choice, but we have to remember that this is a pandemic that does not care about our personal choice. It doesn't say, hey, I'm gonna infect you because you decided to come back to school. So you thought this was safe, and you were willing to roll the dice. I'm only gonna take you out. It can take out other people as well. It is a pandemic, and we are not ready for it. I have been an activist, um, working within CPS for almost ten years now, and I've seen repeatedly how CPS does not keep its students safe. It does not keep its diverse learners safe. It does not keep its teachers safe. And we need to be aware of that is who we are dealing with. This plan, as somebody else said, was not created by stakeholders. It was not created by scientists. It was not created by teachers. A lot of it seems to have come from PR departments who spent a lot of money on signage about washing your hands and taking really poorly planned photo ops with the kids already with the mask below their nose, already with fake pictures of a teacher being able to help a child. Your children are not gonna get that connection that they're looking for when they are sitting six feet apart for seven hours a day wearing a mask. This is not how we're gonna get connection. Some of you can buy connection, and you can send your kids to camps and other resources and after-school programs and pods, and some of you cannot. And then that is your choice, but when you are sending them to a CPS school, you are making your choice affect everybody around you, affect the teachers, and affect the staff. I do not feel it is safe. I think it will be eventually. And that we're going to have to wait out a little bit longer. I never thought, I pulled my kids a week earlier than CPS did back in March. I never thought we would still be sitting here. I never thought we would still be sitting at home. I never thought that we'd be wearing masks. And I'll be honest, we still sometimes wipe down our groceries. I didn't think we would still be here, but I have made it this long without my family getting sick. And I'm going to keep it up as long as I have to, and I also can know that I haven't infected anybody else. I don't want my kids feeling responsible for when a teacher dies. Right now, fifty-four, since January fourth, fifty-four CPS schools have reported positive COVID cases. Eighty CPS schools so far. The number is going up every, every few hours. LSCs have sent a letter. Of course, our vote doesn't say, okay, we decided the school's not opening. No, that is not what this vote is about. This is about representing people and our confidence in this plan to keep our children and our staff safe, so.
Thank you, Lori.
Can I, can I just make one comment? Somebody, um, is making comments that are fine, you can make comments all you want, but I think everyone should have their name up. I think all of us are really trying to be accessible and be accountable to the pa- to the parents of the school. And so if you don't have your name shown and you're making um, a little bit nasty comments, uh, it's fine. If you wanna make those nasty comments, please just say who you are. Um, but I think it's a little bit, um, it's, it's pretty cowardly to just show up with a no name and then say nasty comments about people who are really trying to do the best we can to help everybody with a really difficult problem.
I'm also gonna ask that LSC members don't make others feel, um, bad for speaking up. There was a meeting last week where it was heavily represented, one side of this discussion, and tonight, while it may seem others um, have shown up to share a different vantage point, we also received written statements, and everyone does have a right to share. So whether it's tonight, whether it's in writing, or whether it was last week, I am going to ask that we all re- respect that people have taken time to do that.
Um, I, that's probably mentioned toward me because I will, I will say specifically. Uh, I did read everybody's statements, and I listened very clearly, and I'm, I'm sorry, um, if I seem very firm in how I feel, but I do want you to know that I appreciate people show up. I know it takes a lot to come in and for this amount of time, and I know it's hard, especially because this is an emotional, um, this is very emotional. So I do appreciate everybody and everything that they have to say.
Thank you.
I really, um, what's standing out for me, uh, was the question, how can we as a local school council represent the community as a whole in this process? So how do we embrace the entire community, people returning, people deciding not to return? How do, how does everybody feel represented by us? How do we, how do we accomplish that? And I, and I think that is really important. As much as we want to support the way that we feel and support our teachers and support whatever angle that we're coming from, maybe to like, you know, it feels like we're reaching across the aisle, and how do we embrace the people that are making this decision to send their kids back? How are they, they, they need to be represented as well. So how do we do this as a local school council?
I think one of the things to keep in mind is, you know, I, I think we had this conversation, um, at our last meeting was, you know, thinking about the letter and, and what it represents, um, you know, in terms of, are we saying, what are we saying? Are we saying it's no confidence? Are we saying we're concerned? Um, and also recognizing kind of the levity of our letter in the face of the many other letters that have been submitted. And at the end of the day, um, how this will move, shift, or undergird, um, actions moving forward. I think keeping that in perspective has been he- helpful for me in terms of, um, thinking through, um, this work and also being in connection with other families.
I guess I'll push that a little further, and I appreciate, Cindy, I appreciate you saying that. I think that that is the role of the LSCs. That, uh, you know, we are one community, whether you're coming back in person or you're staying remote. We're still one school and one community. Um, and then I'm going to piggyback that by saying, to kind of to Sarah's point, I don't think it's just about a letter. I don't think the only reason we're here tonight is about a letter or not a letter. I think we need to be thinking much to Cindy's point. What are things we can be doing beyond a letter? It's, it's not write a letter or not, like there, there's other ways that we can think about supporting our community because this is beyond us and beyond writing a letter, and whatever the outcome is, and let's be honest, it might, it might, it might be the elephant in the room right now, where we're not coming back right away as we thought for any of us because of other issues that take place. Everyone's still gonna need support, no matter if it's, you know, you're in person, you're not in person, or if let's be honest, if there's a potential of a work stoppage, and none of us, our children are not in class, regardless of in school or at home. So there's a lot of opportunity here that I think we really can embrace around how to support our community, and that is really where I believe that our, our focus should be. Um, and so I, I echo the sentiments of, of both of you, but push to think beyond just writing a statement or a letter, but really more around actions and support. I think about the assistance fund that we just approved last week and how we've already helped families through that. And just, just the, the various options that, you know, we, we could be exploring beyond just a written statement.
Yeah, I don't think that there's a single person in the community, in our school community, that wishes anybody to feel fear, feel, feel fearful in their jobs to get sick, to be compromised in any way, shape, or form. Um, yeah, so it's sort of like, where in this letter do we tease out what we need? We, we, we say what we don't want, what is bad, what is bad, but where, where are we reaching out to CPS and saying, well, this is what, this is what might work, but this would, this might make it work better if we have these things. Can we have more support for, especially for teachers? How do we ensure that those cadre subs come in and are in place, and there's enough of them? You know, are we, are we appealing to the school board for help? Say, hey, you know, I, I don't know, I did the tone. The tone of the, the letter is, you know, definitely, it, it just is like, we just can't support any of this that's going on. Well, are there some parts of it that if we banded together as a community and came together to support and beef up, would it make it better? And if it's inevitable that we're going back to school, then where do we change our mindset to say, okay, even if my kids are at home, oh my gosh, how can we support everybody that's back in the building? What do we do? How do we help each other?
I think, I think the points raised thus far are, are quite valid, and I think exactly where we need to be um, centered and what we consider. We do represent an, an entire diverse community that has made diverse choices. I think we have two, two parts here. So we have whether or not we're going to submit a resolution. And then, much to like Mira and Cindy spoke, how do we support families regardless of the outcome of whether we return, whether there's a work stoppage, whatever, how do we support families that made whatever choice they made? So when it comes to whether or not the board, um, with the revolution to the district, I think in representing the full community that the emphasis should be on the fact that any plan put forward should not sacrifice learning based on a parent's choice. Students who choose to come, or parents who choose to send their children back, there are safe ways to do it where their learning will not suffer as much. And then parents who choose not to send their children back, also, their learning should not be sacrificed for kids being in person. When it comes to the staff, we all come in with different roles and, and positions in this. However, I regard the staff as the soldiers in the trenches. They have the professional experience, the experience with our children, the knowledge of what it takes to effectively teach. And so I lean heavily on their opinions, their professional apparent opinions. I believe, I lean heavily on their subject matter expertise, as we say in my field. Um, and so that, that weighs heavily in what I think we should do. But even in supporting that, I don't think we should necessarily discount the, the, the choice of parents who want to send their children back, or, or we, or regard that choice as wrong, or regard their choices, they don't care about the teachers. It's, it's not that, but we must not be mistaken to think that. Um. So as we, as we move forward in considering whether we write a resolution, I, I, I feel like that's that's where we should come from as a board to represent the whole community, not don't return. Not, um. Yeah, just to, to represent everyone and say that there is a, a better way for CPS to do this where students who choose to return are supported, and students who choose not to return are still supported, and teachers are kept safe. I think that's where our, if we do a resolution, I feel like that's where it should come from. There anyone else who would like to?
I think.
Yeah. Kate hadn't raised her hand.
Nick, go ahead. We haven't heard from you.
Okay, um, so I think, um, I'm just, I'm gonna echo, you know, what a lot of people have said already, um, and um, Cindy, I really appreciated that you were talking about, you know, this resolution can be like a, what can the board do? this resolution can be like a, what can the board do with us to make this happen? As opposed to a, we're not happy with this, with this, with this, with this. And I hope, you know, from, um, all the majority of the teachers who've spoken, actually all the teachers who've spoken, I hope no one is, you know, getting a misunderstanding that we don't want to go back. You know, trust me, you know, I haven't been teaching for 20 years to then teach on a computer. It knows how long. Um, I am really looking forward to the day when the students can come back. Um, if anyone has seen me teach their children in music, I have been in my own classroom since September. Um, the primary purpose being I want the students to see a familiar setting. I want them to recognize the music room. And then when we do come back, it's not such a shift in, oh, wait, you know, Mr. Hall was at home all this time, now we have to go to school kind of thing. Um, and, but I also want to stress the fact, I don't think we would be having this meeting right now if CPS had partnered with teachers, have partnered with principals, have partnered with families to get some input from us. You know, you've heard about how chaotic some of the things were, even just the, you know, for parents to, um, sign up for their kid to come back hybrid. We heard from a parent tonight who said, you know, the opportunity, she missed that opportunity. Um, or parents who signed up to come back only because they knew, you know, well, the next chance is going to be fourth quarter. That's after spring break. Let's keep in our, our options open. Um, as parents have said and, um, teachers have said, there are many districts that have successfully reopened. Um, I have a niece and nephew who are here in Chicago, um, in a private school and they have been hybrid since September, except for, um, you know, over the holidays, they went back to remote as a safety measure. Um, but this was a small school. This was well thought out. The technology was there. Um, it was a true partnership from what I can understand between the families, the teachers, the, um, superintendent of that district of that school. Um, and it really is just, you know, for me, the letter is, we're asking for you to work with us to make this safe. We want to come back, but as teachers and we, you know, we are in the thick of it. We are kind of behind the scenes knowing what's being planned. Um, the plan may look safe on paper and may sound really good. Um, you know, coming from the board, but you know, as you have heard, the reality is it, it, it doesn't feel safe. It doesn't feel safe to the majority of us. And so, you know, again, uh, we're not against coming back. We are against coming back in an unsafe situation and we're asking for everyone to work together, um, you know, um. You know, even from, this will be my last thing. Um, I remember back in the survey, you know, when, um, parents were asked in December to make a choice. Um, looking at our numbers, 14% of our families never had the chance to, never responded. Now, I don't know why, you know, what the situation was. I don't remember CPS reaching out to those to find out, oh, why didn't you respond? What is your decision? Their decision was if you didn't respond, you're remote. And that was pretty much it. And so that's not equitable. That's not working with the parents from the start, you know? Um, so anyway, hopefully that makes sense.
Kate.
Hi, um, so I was just going to say, um, I think a lot of people who are on the call haven't seen like the draft that, um, Sarah and, um, and Sid, sorry, Sarah and Lori had worked on. One of the things like after reading all of the, um, a lot of the feedback from parents that really were, um, very excited about school starting and felt like it was really important for us to go back in. One of the things that I liked about our draft statement is it did not directly say that we think schools should not be opening on February 1st for students. It was more of these are the things that we think are unfair and not safe in the current opening. Um, and so I don't, I, because I am conflicted because I realize the importance of schools opening, just like teachers do. Um, I, you know, it, it was hard for me if we were going to be saying something, like a lot of the other LSCs have said that like, we say this should not happen. Um, I really did want more consensus because I feel like for the parents who want to go back, who are planning on sending their kids to go back to school, the parents who are still planning remote, I think there's a lot of places where we have consensus. I think there's a lot of concern about how teachers are going to effectively going to be able to teach in the classroom and at the same time, teaching remote. It seems insane to me that that would be an option, um, because it just, you can't possibly do it. The teachers have just figured out just remote. But then when you have a kid that's 18 feet away from you because they're spaced out and they can't hear you, how are you handling that? Um, so I feel like, I, I think there's also a lot of concerns about for kids and for teachers about teachers spending the day with too many kids and making these pods have less contact with each other and with specials teachers and things like that. I feel like there's ways that we could be recommending that this is done. I mean, Mr. Hall for one has been doing such a fantastic job remote. I know he wants to be in person with students again, but maybe he could be, you know, still in the music room and doing that remote. So he's not going around to so many pods during the day and still doing music, but they're following along. Like I, I think there's some other things that we could come up with that there would be consensus amongst the different groups that we should be focusing on. I think it's important that we write a letter of some sort, supporting a lot of the themes that we've heard from teachers and from parents about things that could be done better. Um, and I think that the draft letter that we came up with was kind of getting there on some of those topics, but maybe we need to be more constructive and talk about what kind of fixes we think and talking with teachers about what things could be modified to make it safer or restructuring things and how we could support them in that way so that we're kind of moving forward for all kids in the school.
Thank you. There was a question in, uh, the chat about how did we write a draft letter prior to the meeting? It was an exercise that I asked two of the board members to engage in just to be prepared. And so we wouldn't be starting from scratch if we decide to write a letter. And basically it took into account lots of things. Uh, well, first of all, I chose these two particular people because, one, um, because of their knowledge as far as parent engagement and LSC and communication, like that. And the other parent I chose because of her involvement in what is going on with the reopening plan right now as far as, um, uh, information that is not necessarily publicized by CPS, but can be gained, um, and particulars of the, uh, reopening, well, the particulars of the numbers, uh, for things. So that's how they came up with the draft. Not only was that draft shared with the council, but also all of the feedback sent by parents and any, and anyone else who sent into the LSC email, the personal information was redacted, but all of that information was provided to the board as well. So that's how we came up with a draft before the meeting. Uh, is there anyone else who would like, sure, Lori?
Uh, one thing I want to, I want to address, um, no bro, about how, how are we planning to help support the school at reopening? And I think that's one of the things with this LSC is that I hope that we build together the kind of team who starts to work outside of just, I like the word pod, out, just outside of our school. What can we do on the bigger issues? And like when Cindy said about how can we do better? How can we do better to represent everybody? Is that I love the fact that this special meeting was called. Um, those kinds of things we have already talked about. It'll be on the agenda and maybe we'll decide that we want to have committees again. So the parents who want to have a voice and want to have action, there's going to be opportunities for that. I've been sending out things to the LSC now about different training opportunities and different ways that we can work with other LSCs around the city. How can we support all of us together? And I know I sound a little negative sometimes, but the other top part of me is like, yay! Um, I love the idea that we can do better. And so I think that by listening to everybody, and it is hard, it is an emotional topic, um, but we can do better. And that's one of the things that to look at. And in my opinion, I understand that feeling of, so you wrote a letter before you listened to us. I get that. But also with LSCs, because of how we have to vote on everything and how we have to have call special meetings, like we can't all meet without you all here. We're not allowed to just say, hey, let's get together and put this all together. There's a limit to how many of us can talk at one time because we do want to be transparent and we do want to be legal and we want to do it right. So we can start a draft just to kind of give us a place with the science numbers and the COVID numbers and the CPS numbers, but that doesn't include all of that feedback. So all of that feedback is going to be taken in. It was not a done deal. It's just a jumping off point so that we can keep things moving for everybody, just like we want a CPS reopening plan to keep moving.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, Kate, is that your hand up or is that leftover? Okay. Um, is there anyone else on the board who would like to add anything?
I see Cindy's hands still raised. Did you have a?
Oh. Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Uh.
Tina, I guess I have a question.
Uh.
So it seems like it's going to be pretty uncertain what's going to happen in CPS over the course of the next week. Like I think between now and Monday, it's pretty hard to predict where we're going to be. And, um, how does that affect our decision of whether or not to send a letter? I mean, do we, does anyone have any reservations about whether we send a letter, you know, tomorrow and then on Friday CPS announces revisions consistent with this letter or something to that effect? I'm curious to hear if we have any thoughts about timing or how, um, kind of the broader context this letter affects what we want to write.
I think we talked about having a draft or some consensus on a, on a draft. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong folks, but I know we talked about having this, uh, to, to have a decision about this at our next LSC meeting, which is why we had this special meeting so that we could add that to the agenda to approve the actual letter.
We did not talk about that.
Oh, we did not?
I don't remember. Uh-uh, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that either. I, my understanding was that we would leave here with a pretty final resolution if we're going to do it. Um, and so hence the, hence the draft as well to save some time. But yeah, my understanding was that we would make a decision and we would pretty much be go or no go with a pretty final format of the go if we decide to do it. And as far as your question, um, Matt, um, I think we make a decision tonight based on where we are, the information we have and, um, finalize it and, and get it sent. If we do that, and, um, that way, our letter pertains to where we are now and subsequent decision by the board or however it turns out, it's kind of inconsequential.
I think when people talk about affecting change, that's part of it, is that this letter represents adding so many schools to the voice and that is just a way of asking CPS to do better, to know that we are watching them and to know that we will work with them, but we can also work, I'm, I'm going to say it, you can also work against them. Um, we need to show that we're paying attention, especially because we do have an unelected school board. And we need to have that change as well.
I think my interest was just making sure that as we choose or not to speak out, we do so in a way that's, um, that is, you know, cognizant of just where things stand. I mean, it's possible CPS may, you know, change their mind tomorrow given CTU's vote today. And, um, you know, given those facts, I just, I think today in particular, and especially over just the last couple of hours, um, we're in a, a bit of a different place than we were, um, yesterday. So, so, um, I guess I will say that I would be curious to see what happens between now and Friday. As we decide whether or not to send a letter. So I think, you know, my question is just around timing and whether there's any interest in, you know, staging kind of where things go for.
I just have to say, I, I confused that conversation with the other conversation we had about the committee work. So.
Um, I would, um, respond to that, Matt. Um, so as far as like, you know, making a decision, like I would say, if we are going to decide on a statement, we would have to do it now, like as soon as possible. Um, you know, if not, I think if we're waiting till our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting, that would be after schools have already reopened. And I think, you know, if our concern is that, you know, um, the plan in question may not be the safest or the most well thought out. I think we want to make sure the board before, um, you know, before schools are fully reopened, obviously pre-K and cluster programs are already in buildings as we know. Um, yeah, and I also just wanted to add, like, just to be clear, you know, on our agenda, like we are discussing the, um, a reopening resolution. And, you know, I know a couple of times now it's been brought up, like the whole like vote of no confidence for an elected, unelected school board and all that. And, you know, that to me is a completely different issue, which we all have our opinions on, but that is not the purpose of this meeting. You know, this possible resolution is the current state of reopening, um, our schools. Um, so I just want to make sure we're not, you know, confusing issues and blending them. Um, to me, I think we do owe it to everyone to be really transparent about what our decision is tonight.
Um, I was also just going to say, and, uh, thanks for clarifying that, Nick. But I was also just going to say that, um, we're for, i- i- it feels as though the 42% who have chosen in person are not being discussed as we are seemingly talking about writing a resolution that hasn't been voted on if we're writing a resolution. So I still feel that we need to discuss if we are even doing so because there is still an option where there are things we can do to support our community, our school-based community without writing a resolution. And I, I personally feel like there's a discussion being had about a foregone resolution. And I don't feel that, um, other ideas have been discussed as to how we can support our community. Um, and so I, I feel that we owe it to those 42% to have a conversation about other things that we can be doing. Um, and then if there is a vote and people decide to write a resolution, that's one thing, but I, I do feel that we've somewhat shifted from thinking about the others as well. Um, so I, I would like to bring that back to the table before we just decide on one piece.
Mira, would you like to, to, to start that conversation?
Um, yeah, two hands are up though. I think, uh, Kate and Sarah, and I don't know if it's about what I just said or not, but yeah, that's, I'm fine with that.
Kate.
So the, the one thing that I would say is the reason we had this meeting is, was it was a specific ask from teachers to kind of have the support of this local school council on addressing the concerns that they raised at the last meeting. And I feel like if we were writing a resolution that said, we do not want schools open, we must push back the start date, we should not be opening now, that would be a resolution that was not including the 42% that are choosing to come back. I feel like the teachers have raised points about this plan not being great for in-person pay students, remote students, and then the additional safety concerns with that. And so I do feel like we can write a letter that supports our teachers and supports the, the students that are coming back in all forms and the parents that have made those decisions. I don't necessarily think, I mean, if we were writing a resolution that said, we do not want it open, done. But I don't think that is on the table right now. And so I do think that in the draft that we put together, some of the things that we're talking about are trying to figure out how we have a better in-person environment for students that is safer and better for their, for their education. And so I don't necessarily think that saying yes to a resolution, not that we shouldn't be doing other things to support everybody. I completely agree, but that wasn't the initial intent of this meeting. I think we can write a letter that does advocate for every student, regardless of what their decision is, because I think I haven't heard anyone say that they think that this way that we're opening up is the best we can do to educate in-person students or people at home. I have not heard anyone say, you're all crazy. This is a fantastic plan. I have not heard anyone say, you're all crazy, this is a fantastic plan, it's going to work out great for everybody. If I had heard that, I would think about that. But I, I keep hearing about how this is going to disservice kids no matter what choice they made. And so I don't look at this as ignoring the forty-two percent if we're trying to improve the environment for learning for all of the kids of Agassi.
Sarah, thank you, Kate. Sarah? Oh, okay.
Nick? Sorry, I, I was, I was trying to unmute. I apologize. Um, just yes, and uh, what Kate said, I mean, I, and I also, you know, I, I, this is about, you know, for me, all of the kids and how we can lean in and support that. It is a letter, but I agree, we have to go beyond that. Um, and I know that the focus of this conversation today is very much upon, you know, do we vote on, on moving forward with that letter? Um, and I very much welcome the conversation and I love the fact that uh, you know, we're having a conversation about moving, you know, into spaces of really digging down and figuring out what else could be done.
Nick, after this conversation, has anything changed for you in your perspective in writing the letter?
Um, not really though, because I think kind of to echo what Kate said, I don't see it as going against families who want to return. I think it's, you know, as I mentioned before, it's the point of view of, you know, the teachers are in the thick of it, you know? We have, you know, a feeling of what is feasible, what is not in an educational setting. Um, and just, you know, thinking of what we know about all the students and uh, developmentally and pedagogically, like where they're at. Um, you know, is the current plan the best for, you know, especially like you've heard for our younger students? No. Um, you know, and I don't think we're going to find an ideal plan. We are in the middle of a pandemic, but we can find a safer plan. Um, so I would say no, my, my, you know, I do think it's important that, you know, and, you know, as Mira said, there is more we need to do, obviously, but this is the first step. Um, you know, just like we've talked a lot about equity this year and one of the first steps was changing our name. We went through that. And or we're, we've done our part. Now it's, you know, to the board to finalize the decision. And again, like that was kind of the starting point of, you know, deep discussions and a look at equity at Agassi. Um, and so in the same way, like taking a stand or just informing the board, we want them to work with us. We don't feel like they did. Um, and then, you know, yes, then we have time to see like how else can we help all our community members, both in-person and remote. Um, I think it might help too, because I know, you know, we keep talking about this letter. We've seen this draft, but to anyone listening in, you know, they might have questions or concerns. So, you know, the, the draft that has been proposed um, basically mentions three key areas that um, are of concern and that those areas are um, inequity in choices for families, um, the adverse impact on the school climate, culture and safety and um, lack of technological infrastructure, which has been brought up by teachers as far as simultaneously teaching. Um, so again, those are the air, you know, it is, it's equity, appropriate technology and then safe climate and culture. Um, and those are really the three areas that are covered in the letter. Um, and again, like it is not a, um, I've already forgotten the word, non.
A vote of no confidence.
Thank you. It is not a vote of no confidence. Um, uh, and it is not a vote to not, or not a letter saying we don't want schools to reopen. Um, so just wanted to clarify that because I'm, you know, it's, I've been on the other side where people are talking about something I've never seen and it's can be a little frustrating or worrying.
And I think that we have another meeting coming up so quickly that we could put it on the agenda to discuss ways to support the opening. So this is about making a statement about the current plan, but we could easily put on our next agenda, set aside time where we can start to make concrete ideas and ask people to bring in their, their feedback and for us to think about ways that we can support all of our learners, all of our staff, all of our clinicians. And so by making this statement, we are not taking that opportunity away. They're all in little bits and pieces because this is a big puzzle.
The committee discussion is a great opportunity for that um, to, to take shape and to get support. Um, is there anything, anyone else would like to add?
I know a lot of spend sat already and we're going on um, two hours and some of us maybe haven't eaten dinner of kids to put to bed. So I won't take much more of anyone's time repeating what my, you know, fellow colleagues have said. I guess I just feel like um, I know that when we're all speaking, this can go in many directions. And then just to echo what others said, I feel like we need to go back to what the point of the meeting, I believe, was. And so perhaps we could move in the next direction about talking if, I believe, if I'm right, we want to pass this resolution. And then I think we could talk about if we vote yes about the letter. And I know that it was sent earlier this afternoon and I'm sure it's very well written, it looks like it. And I know Nick has had a chance to review it, but having taught all day and trying to prepare for tomorrow and having a toddler, I haven't had a chance to review it. So if we're talking about all stakeholders being um, involved, I would like a chance to read through it to make sure it does include um, all voices. So I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, I feel a little, so we need to vote on if we're going to proceed with such letter and then let all members weigh in on the letter and then send it. And then I think it's two things. That's one, that's tonight's plan, it sounds like. And then part two is how do we all come together for when we inevitably, if not February first, but eventually go back to school? It's still going to look and feel very different. And so I think we could work then um, on what we do there and how we all come together. It feels like we're talking about two different things if I'm hearing currently and maybe for the purposes of now, we can work on tonight's resolution. Then we can all discuss how we can work as a staff and parents and school community about how we make our next steps um, include all. Is that?
Thank, thank you, Emily. Yes, that, that makes absolute sense. Uh, I believe everyone has had a chance to weigh in. Um, is there a motion? I'll give someone else a chance. Is there a motion on the floor?
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Sorry, if, so if we vote yes that we want to do a resolution, do we have to vote on the exact letter tonight? Or can we say we're going to do the resolution and then get input to modify, finalize whatever the letter and then do that over email? And if there's at least seven of us who agree to sending it, we send it?
The letter itself has um, items that I did share were not accurate, so the letter itself would have to change. Um, because as currently drafted, there is not, it's not factual information.
Right.
So we, if we vote to, to do the resolution, um, we would not be able to effectively have a meeting, uh, see, see a um, LSC meeting over email. Um, or get a committee of.
But we can't approve that we are going to do a resolution and then appoint two or three people to be responsible for.
That was my, that was my next statement. So we can vote whether or not to write, to uh, submit the resolution. And, and, and deciding the process to do so, we can basically um, decide what points it's going to hit and then charge two, three members with finalizing and uh, forwarding.
Okay.
So one quick question before we vote. Uh, I, it's a question, I think probably specifically for Mr. Hall, but anyone else, feel free to weigh in. Uh, what was the attitude towards the uh, Pierce resolution, which was, I think, uh, a bit shorter? And uh, would probably be easier for us to come to an agreement on.
Um, attitude as far as other staff members or? Um, honestly, I don't know. I just had seen that I, um, you know, the uh, fellow teacher had shared like that folder with all the resolutions from all different schools. And I was just kind of going through, looking at, you know, what would be, and yeah, yeah, so I actually, I chose to model um, draft off of that one because of its succinctness, I believe that is the word. Um, because I thought, yes, it was, you know, to the point, um, you know, it was two paragraphs. Um, and so, um, yeah, I have just, you know, offered that to the board too, just to, or to the council, sorry, to um, to take a look at. Um, so I, you know, for me, that's fine as an option too.
But wasn't it saying things a little bit more like, we do not want schools to open? And I, 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 I thought the language was not where we wanted to go. That's, I think it's short, but I thought it was, unless I'm confusing it with another one.
Okay, let's uh, let's get to um, a motion on the resolution.
Tina, if I can just answer to Kate. Um, Kate, you are correct. It is, it's a little more um, opposed to, um, let me look at the words.
It's, it's.
It's, it's asking the board to reconsider its plan. Yes, you are correct, Kate. That is um, a little more against it, yeah, so. Thanks for pointing that out.
Um, I would like to make a motion that the local school, this local school council submit a resolution to the CPS board. Wanted to word this carefully. Um, and asking them to improve upon the current reopening plan and to take into consideration the voice of all stakeholder, stakeholders. Is there a second?
A second, Tina.
Okay, we got Sarah and Kate's second. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Okay.
Sorry, Tina. Um, so the resolution is, sorry, the motion is to vote on taking a resolution, but we haven't decided yet what the letter would be like, right?
Well, we haven't decided what the letter would be like, but my uh, motion is that the resolution be centered around CPS improving on their reopening plan and taking into consideration the voices of all stakeholders.
Thank you.
So if there's no more discussion on the uh, motion, we'll vote by roll call. Kirsten?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Emily?
Sorry, you would think I know how to do this faster right now. Yes.
Yes.
Mira?
Abstain.
Marilyn?
You had to leave early.
Oh, okay. Kate?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, and I am voting yes on the motion. So uh, Emily, that count, the motion carries for this LSC to submit a resolution to CPS board asking that they uh, improve on the current reopening plan as well as consider uh, all stakeholders' voices. The count on that motion is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. In favor, one abstain.
I am going to ask and I uh, respectfully ask that the resolution is signed with individual names and the constituents that you represent. And I would like it to be very clear that the principal of the school abstained from the vote in whatever is submitted.
Thank you, Mira. Uh, okay, so now to the, the content of that resolution. Particularly Lori, Sarah and Nick, um, is there a starting point you would suggest as well as uh, making modifications live right now? You don't necessarily have to project. But if we could uh, at least work on what the bullet points will be and then we'd have a smaller group finalize the letter.
All right, so. Just to clarify the ask, Tina, I mean, um, just, you know, you want us to uh, re, clarify the bullet points in the, in the draft, the, the draft statement right now?
Right, so I would, I would like to um, get as near a final as we can or get any feedback that um, board members have right now and down, adding what to say, you know, whatnot, and, and then just to make sure it is representative of what the, what the motion that passed was. So we, we're definitely not going to say, don't open. We're, we're not uh, going to um, have a vote of no, have a statement of no confidence, be it um, in Dr. Jackson or Miller Lightfoot. The, the, the resolution is strictly about the ask around the current reopening plan as far as improvements. And, and so then the finalization of that, or at least getting near final would be, what do we want them to improve on? So getting those bullet points down. And then the other one is uh, consideration of all stakeholders. What stakeholders are we talking about? So I think if we can get those things outlined clearly, uh, as well as any numbers that are going to be included, those need to be, make sure that they are accurate. Um, I think if we can get those things, then we can have the smaller committee um, finalize it and then per Mira's request, the individuals who wish to sign it can um, have their, you know, the individuals who voted yes on it can, can have their names attached. And we do need to clearly indicate that the principal abstained from this vote.
Uh, I think that's, I'm looking at the draft right now, so I apologize for everybody watching at home who can't see the draft. Um, but so it would seem like we would take out, at one point there was a line about halt the plan, so we would want to take out that. Um, am I correct? Because people are seeming that we want to talk about making the plan better. And, and I think that based on the, sorry, uh, based on that feedback we got from so many people, is that, I don't know, from all that other feedback that we got, we could beef up the section about um, to Kate's point and to particularly the staff point about what in-person and hybrid, what is that all going to look like? And so maybe call out some of our concerns that it is not equitable for those choosing to remain remote and those choosing to return. So we want to make sure that we're beefing that part up.
Want to make sure there's equal representation and clearly clear communication that in-person and remote should be an option and should be equitable.
Yeah, and I think we can mention that we did hold this meeting and that we did hear from the people who really felt strongly that their kids needed to be back for mental health reasons or for educational reasons, um, and make it clear that those voices are included as well.
Um, we do need to correct the numbers that are given under the air ventilation and testing that was conducted, but that is inaccurate information.
And those same, um, I email the council for the um, just adding, you know, that not the entire staff were surveyed um, in the eighty-seven percent of the staff that had concerns about the reopening plan.
Thank you for that, yeah, because we just went off um, one of the statements that was given at the last one. We took a lot of notes. I also want people to know that, I just want to throw it out, that Sarah and I really did our due diligence. We did have a file, which I know one of the teachers referenced. There is a file available if anybody wants it. I can send it to you. Um, I already had sent it out to um, the LSC. Eighty schools, all of those letters that have been submitted are all available online. So we went through and we're trying to figure out, okay, whose voice, what is our voices in LSC? And look at this point, and we really did read, um, at that point, we had sixty letters. So we really did read and do our research to see what was being sent out there.
I, I want to make sure that we, we could correct the part that Mira was saying about the ventilation, but I actually think we could put a much stronger statement in about ventilation. Um, because the, the analysis that was done by the consulting firm, none of those factors that were tested.
are shown to be correlating to, um, you know, keeping children safe in well-ventilated spaces. So I would be happy to get a better statement on, on that part. Um, but it, it, that the specific, the twenty percent number is, is not a correct piece of information.
Um, I know because it was brought up in the chat today. So I know in the draft, um, ELL students are mentioned, um, and I'm just kind of skimming through it again. Um, I can't remember how much is talking about diverse learners, making sure they are represented as well to represent all of our families. Um, it's probably in the inequitable choice part. Um, we're just making sure that, you know, all of our families are represented in this, in the, the letter.
Yeah, I had wrote down, um, of course I have three diverse learners. So that was a big one. That was the thirteen percent diverse learners, which represented, Mira, I think you said thirty-five percent.
It's thirteen percent of those returning and thirty-five percent of our overall population.
Yeah. And I think that maybe part of, um, the social worker's statement could be included. I mean, she had some really good feedback from the clinician's standpoint as well.
I want to add that the piece around equity as far as, um, the prevalence of choice among whites versus, um, persons of colors, I, persons of color. I think that is a valid point, but I think we want to make sure that it is framed in such a way that because of, um, the, because of that school number, it is even more important that both environments be equitable as far as learning opportunities, student engagement. Um, and then also the, um, points around safety for staff and students. Um, I don't know that we had any suggestions necessarily around that. Um, but I think it is fair to point out the lack of, uh, required COVID positive. Um, I think it's fair to point out the lack of a robust testing protocol, um, in the letter.
I also just wanted to get, uh, feedback or insight from like Cindy. I mean, you were talking about, you had shared a point of, you know, what are those? I mean, you have opened the floor about what are those additional improvements, um, or things to consider, um, in the plan? In addition to what other, any other thoughts or ideas? Not to put you on the spot, Cindy, but I just, I, I.
You, you read my mind to the screen. I, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big fan of don't ask, don't get. So what do we want? We, we're saying we have a lot of statistics and we have a lot of numbers and we have a lot of kind of facts, facts thrown in there, but like, what do we want? Other than the pandemic to end, other than for everyone to be vaccinated, which we're hoping. Like Nick, what do you want? Like going back to the classroom, what do you want?
And, um, Mira, is there, you know, we, this is, it's kind of the yes and, I know you're abstaining, but getting to Cindy's question, um, is there anything that, you know, you could offer, you want to offer to, um, speak to that point of, of needs, wants, how, um?
No, you guys are sweating.
Sorry, I'm having a heart, uh.
Okay.
Great. Can you, can you move, Kate?
I hope you can hear me a little louder. I'll, I'll speak a little louder. I was just going to ask if you, if there's anything you want to lean in on in terms of, um, wants or needs. Getting back to Cindy's, uh, question, what do we need, what do we want? Is there like, uh, um, you know, some type of gateway here in the letter? Uh, as we think about this as a way to step into the next step about, you know, really thinking through how the LSC leans in on supporting the school with the reopening plan?
Um, that's a hard one for me, Sarah. I need to think about it because as it's tied to this, I, I, I think I need to, I think I need to think about that one.
I'll just speak to what I wrote in the chat in case it was distracting because I know as a teacher, when friends, or friends, when students write things in the chat, when you're trying to talk, it could be distracting. I guess I was just saying, and I know I said this a few minutes ago, but, um, I'm assuming we've all had a full day. And just my perspective is like, I don't know what the best use of our time is for the rest of the evening. I understand, obviously, I, I side with all of us and voted yes, that this needs to be done, um, soon. I guess I just wonder, at least for me and my headspace and how I, as a, as a visual learner teacher, I would like a chance to read the document, maybe not on this. It's just hard to read the letter while also talking to you all. And then I know we got some LSC, um, emails that came through late today. And again, teaching and parenting, I haven't had a chance to like read through everything. Um, and I also could get the teacher statements that were shared. So that way, I guess we're just giving ourselves a little bit more time to do this properly versus all this kind of kind of sharing stuff live now. Um, and I'm not sure if Lori or Sarah was like adding all of this to their current resolution doc. So I wrote in the chat, like, do we want to allow ourselves, um, a deadline of like send Sarah or Lori or whoever's like the author our ideas by noon tomorrow, for example, or something? Um, just a suggestion about what makes the most sense. Because I know Nick said something and Mira had said something. And like I said, I didn't get a chance to thoroughly read it just because it's easier for me to do when I have some quiet space. So, um, didn't know if it made sense just to kind of say, yes, we voted for a resolution, but let's work on the draft and submit it or have it done by XYZ time and date, like tomorrow, midday or whatever time we all chose. Does that make sense to others for the use of time and energy?
I very much like the idea of getting the, if anybody, if teachers or anyone are willing to send those statements. I think that, and the same thing, I know many of the people who spoke today also sent in letters. I think having anything written, um, helps us capture voices more. So anybody who wanted to send in what they said tonight and that maybe didn't respond or maybe got some ideas from listening tonight, if they wanted to send them into the LSC email, um, that would be a really great way to capture all of this. And I think that capturing this moment is really important.
So, um, I thank you, thank you, Emily and Lori. I think, um, I think that's a great suggestion, Emily. Uh, I think we are all very clear on what the draft or what the resolution is and is not to contain. I think we clearly communicated, um, the stance we want to take that represents our full community and does not discount the need of, uh, it being a different and personal choice for our families. So, um, with that being said, um, Sarah, Lori, Nick would, uh, let's see, Sarah, 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 Lori, Nick, um, would you three be willing to be the core of finalizing this? And then, uh, perhaps, um, to Emily's point, we set a deadline for input, um, additional input, but within the guidelines of what we've already decided. Set a deadline for that to be, um, tomorrow, it's Thursday, we say, uh, four PM tomorrow. Is that acceptable? And then, um, we could work on if you guys distribute that final that you come up with. And then, um, we could sign, you know, our, our, we could see it at least. And then we would be able to get it sent out. Is that an okay plan with everyone? Does that sound feasible? Uh, Mac, I presume you're nodding your head, although all I see is a nice still shot. Mac? Ah, there you are. So are you okay with that plan? Okay, great. Um, was there, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Is, is there anything left on the agenda?
Action items and next steps you just kind of did. And then next meeting is regular meeting, February third at six PM.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, again, I want to thank everyone for their time calling in. Uh, were, uh, thoughts submitted and for hanging in there. This has been a very long meeting. So thanks for working this out as a community. I look forward to doing more of this in this way. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
A second.
You gotta say it.
Motion. I motion, okay. Kate motions.
I think we have motion, a second to adjourn. We will very quickly do this. Uh, was there any discussion on motion to adjourn? Okay, we'll do this vote, Kirsten? Laura, Lori?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Mira?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The vote to adjourn is unanimous. Thank you and have a great night. Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty, eight twenty-two.